Everybody's off doing their own thing. Is this thing on?
Yeah.
Okay, colleagues, we're going to get ready to start. All right, my colleagues, we are here tonight for a budget work session. I don't know how many that makes us have, but we've had a lot. So I am going to ask Lee Burden to go over our proposed school board budget amendments. We've had some that we've been working on for a few months. We have some that are revised and some that are new recently. So I would ask particularly the makers of the motions where they're new or revised in the last few, the last week or so, we can talk about those. And we're just going to operate this as we do a regular budget as a regular work session. So I don't have a clock up here, or you have the clock. Okay, so we can, can we all see that? I don't know. Can you guys on that side see the timer? Okay, so.
But you'll see.
But we'll see it and I'll, you know, I'll let you know, we're just going to operate the same way. So Ms. Burden, if you want to rock us through the document that is on the board behind us, and we can see it on our television screens as well.
Right, the first few items that are listed in the far left column is February are the original items that have been discussed at the last few budget work sessions. Of course, the first one is get to green, and that is to add two full-time permanent specialist positions and instructional services and one full-time permanent coordinator in facilities for the get to green program. And that cost is about 0.4 million. The next one is the AART teacher, the Advanced Academic Resource Teacher. There are currently 46 Title I elementary schools, 13 have a centrally funded AART, and 33 have 0.5. And so this would give an additional halftime position to the 33 schools that only have, have the 0.5. The next one is the living wage at $15.27. It's, that's 3% over the living wage rate of $14.83 that's included in the operating fund currently. The cost is about 0.2 million, and it should be noted that the county included in its FY '20 budget a living wage of $15.14 per hour. World Language Expansion provides resources to the World Language Program. It's 16 FTEs for academies as well as other programs, online campus and ASL. That's a cost of 1.6 million and 16 FTEs. The next one is a 1% market adjustment, MSA, instead of a 1% bonus for the employees that are at the top of the scale, on the teacher scale and the grandfathered CIS scale, who would otherwise not receive an increase, and the cost of that is 0.2 million. We have 0.6 million built in the budget, and so it would be an additional 0.2 on top of that. Then custodial staffing to add an additional nine positions. And the placement is at a variety of elementary schools and Quander Road at a cost of 0.5 million, and again, nine FTEs. Facilities trade staffing, this one is to provide an additional 10 facilities positions, eight trades positions, one security position, and one boundary coordinator at a cost of 1 million. Behavior intervention teachers, five of those, one for each region. Currently, there are 17, serving an average of 12 to 14 schools each. This would allow more direct and timely services to be provided to schools. And then restraint and seclusion, this one has been revised. We didn't have a cost. The last time that we looked at this particular chart, although Ms. Johnson did provide an overview of what we're thinking. And so that has been costed now at $600,000 or three positions now. It's not 600,000 for the three positions. About half of that 600,000 is for training and that sort of thing to help staff system-wide to address the issues. The, we also removed the movable walls sensors because that was dispensed with at an earlier meeting and is to be funded out of year-end because it's a one-time cost. So that item was removed from the list from the last time that you saw it. And then we have three new ones that came in late yesterday and today. That's the first one, the instructional assistant or the CIS scale salary restoration to one-half of the BA line. The cost of that is 8.1 million, but this, this was a follow-on motion, you may recall. But if you do a three-year phase-in, then it's 2.7 million per year, and if you did a four-year phase-in, it's 2 million per year. And I believe Chair Corbett Sanders is going to speak to this later as to how, how that would be funded. Then the avid coordination, this is from Ms. Evans, supports student success, and it provides 23 schools with a .17 or one-period teacher to provide coordination of the avid program. And so that's a cost of about 300,000 and works out to be 3.9 positions. And then the final one that we received today is nurses for the community schools.
No, no, Ms. Burden, please be very careful. This has nothing to do with community schools. It's just public health nurses for our school.
Okay, I thought this was a, the change in the follow-on, but apparently not. So we will get the language on that change, the item description, from nurses for community schools to nurses. But in any case, if two nurses still costs about 200,000. And so the grand total is 9.1 million, and I can't read that from here. 68.4 positions.
All right, thank you. And I have some people who are, will use this today. So I have Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, thank you. So first, could I, could you remind us, Ms. Burden, what is our gap now between what we have and the 9.1 million up there?
At 3.1 million. 6 million is what is available, and so 9.1 minus 6, 3.1.
Okay, thank you. So just getting down to nuts and bolts, right? It looks like we have to make up 3.1 million dollars. All this stuff is important and good. It has a constituency that's very important to all, or at least many of us. So we all have to figure out where we can maybe slow it down a little bit, you know, roll it out a little bit more slowly, because we want to do all these things, right? So here's just my initial thoughts. I want to hear what everybody has to say. Personally, you know, I've been pushing for the get to green positions. I think it would be possible to go to two full-time equivalent positions this year, and I would put a follow-on motion to add the third next year, and I know that would save us some. I have not talked to Ms. Darnat Kofex about this, and it's our common amendment for the AARTs. We're already slowing it down over two years. I don't know if we're comfortable slowing it down even a little more than that, but that's a possibility that I would put on the table. The IA, you know, getting them to where that's, that's a big piece, and it's just come in. I would ask that maybe that could be slowed down over two years in fairness. I would say behavior intervention teachers restraint and seclusion, I think we have to keep that. You know, I would not want to cut that or shave that at all. The nurses sound like a small item. I would like to hear more from Ms. McLaughlin about that and see how they would be used. I have a question from Ms. Burden. The MSA 1% instead of bonus, could we just get, if you don't mind, a review of what that is and why we're doing it, just for the public? Because we know we have a lot of teachers at the top of the scale who feel like they have been flattened out as we changed our, you know, the way our scale looks. And I certainly understand how they feel. When I worked for FCPS, I was here for the nine years when I think our salaries were frozen for three or four of those years. I was one of those teachers. So I know how it feels now to have put that many years in and feel like you're paying for other people's big raises, you know, it doesn't feel right. So could you just explain what we're doing with the MSA instead of bonus, who that would help and who it wouldn't help, if you don't mind? If that's not too big a question.
Sure. The, well, historically, I don't believe prior to fiscal '18, a bonus was included for employees who weren't receiving a salary increase. And that's generally going to be people at the top of the scale or people who are on a hold step. In '18, I think the school board initiated a bonus to those folks as well, as well as in fiscal '19. So in fiscal '20, we went ahead and included a 1% bonus to the employees who otherwise would not receive a salary increase in the superintendent's proposed budget. And to be clear, that is just on the teacher's schedule and the grandfathered CIS schedule. Because all other schedules get a 1% MSA. You know, recall that step is movement on the schedules, and COLA, MSA, MRA, whatever you want to call it, is applied to the schedule. So all of the schedules, every step in grade will go up 1%, except for the teacher scale because of the enhancement strategy. The 1% is included in that enhancement and the CIS grandfathered scale, which has a couple of hold steps. So the 1% that we included in the superintendent's proposed budget was to make sure that those employees did indeed receive something. And Ms. Paocek has proposed that instead of a bonus, that we go ahead and give those individuals a 1% MSA as well. And, and you know, the bonus doesn't actually count against their creditable compensation or their retirement, whereas an actual MSA would increase their salary and do that. So the additional cost is for the salary sensitive items, you know, with a bonus, it's mostly just FICA that you have to pay. But with the MSA, of course, it's subject to, you know, retirement rates, FICA, all of the salary sensitive items, and so it costs a little bit more. You may have read in the document that we put together that we can't just add 1%, well, we could just add 1% to step 23, which is the final step of the teacher's scale. But if you do that, then it's going to cost much more because not only would everybody on step 23 get that 1%, but all of the employees moving from step 22 to 23 would now suddenly get an additional 1% too. And that's not been factored in to this. So it seems like the, the most viable solution is that this group of individuals would be pulled off into a grandfathered scale so that we could increase that amount by 1%.
Okay, so thank you. So just to clarify, that amount of money up there for the MSA 1% instead of bonus would go to the folks who are on step 23, who would move to step 24 if we had one, right? But they're not, and we want to, instead of giving them a bonus, give them an MSA. And that will be a discrete group of employees who will just move through, and then that problem at least will be solved, all right? But is it?
Yeah, it's 783 individuals in total. It's about 500 on the teacher's scale and, I'm sorry, 509 and 275 on the CIS grandfathered scale.
Okay, all right. Well, I would just say, and my time is running out, and I'll take a go back on that. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burden.
All right, I have, yes, thank you, Ms. Hines. I remind people to shut their lights off because we're not usually like this in a work session. Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
So I just have a couple of questions. I may have some more as my colleagues talk. Follow-on to that discussion, my colleague Ms. Hines said that we'll just do this for the MSA and then we'll be finished. But that's not really true because we'll be in the same position next year, correct? Ms. Burden?
No, well, maybe. It depends. It's on the fiscal environment. I think that there is a desire to return to a step plus COLA, step plus MSA that was kind of a routine many years ago. And now that we've finished the teacher enhancement, I think there's a desire to move back to that. So if you are doing a step plus MSA, 1%, one and a half, whatever the number ends up being, then every step and every grade on every scale would go up that amount. And so it would be unnecessary because there wouldn't be anyone who wasn't getting at least some salary increase.
But you're talking about a step at Longevit? I don't understand. You're talking about step at people at the top of the pay scale.
No, those people wouldn't get stepped. I was speaking generally, but they would get the application of an MSA to the entire scale.
Okay, so you're anticipating that these 783 positions next year, we're talking about like another step and an MSA?
No, just the MSA.
Right. They would go from step 23 to step 24 under this proposal, and then they would just get the MSA and 24 would be the final step. Unless, unless the board directed otherwise to continue to extend.
I thought it was the opposite. I thought they were getting an MSA instead of a step because we're not moving them a step. We're just going to give them a, not creating another step.
I mean, there's a couple of ways that you can handle it. I mean, you could add a step 24, but that has future costs because then you have potentially everybody on step 1 to 24 who now believes that they are going to have 24 steps available to them. So there are future costs associated with that. So another way to handle that is just to move this group into a grandfathered status on that step and increase it by 1%.
I don't know. This is getting less clear the more questions I ask. Maybe I'll stop. Okay. The second question I have, at least for right now, is on the avid, on the avid coordination. So some of the ones, like the CIS restoration, just for the public, just so you understand. The FTE equivalent column means we're not adding positions, we're just paying people who are already in positions more. So for, you know, just to be explanatory for the public whose money we're spending. But I don't understand on the avid, because are you saying, because I know people in the school system who do avid in addition to they're doing something else. Avid's not their only job. So why would, I mean, you're not talking about hiring four more people just to do avid. So why is there an FTE equivalent at all associated with growing avid? Because wouldn't we grow it with our existing personnel?
We would, but it's an increase of a period, .17, at 23 schools, and 23 times .17 is 3.9 FTEs. So that, that's how we, we cost it, but it's actually just a tiny piece of an FTE at 23 schools that would be added.
But I would argue the fact that even though you cost it that way, we should not be showing it as FTEs because that, that says that we're adding people. Unless we have an asterisk that we're not growing, I mean, so this is the question of, and I'm, you know, maybe not everybody has this concern, but growing our employee base just to grow it is not the goal of some of these. just to grow it is not the goal of some of these positions. But this is expanding our capacity with our existing personnel.
I think I know where you're going, and check me if I'm wrong. Anybody, check me if I'm wrong. But having been an AVID principal, there are AVID classes that kids take. And then there's the opportunity to have a position for an AVID coordinator, much like we have an AP coordinator at school, and they get a class period off to do all of the coordination. Am I making sense so far? Right? So this is providing every school the opportunity. Right now, some schools do do that, but they have to rob from their general ed staffing to do that, and that might be another class that they wanted to offer or support, to have that AVID coordinator. This is giving every school, in a sense, that AVID coordinator upfront, and then they can use, I'm just explaining it. So it's not for new teachers, but it's giving basically another section for a teacher to teach another course, instead of having to take it from their existing staffing.
Okay. That answers my question.
All right. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Okay. Let me first begin for my colleagues on why the proposed amendment for school nurses looks different. So as you all may remember, back in February, the board passed my follow-on motion to direct the superintendent to look at our current practices related to school nurses and what would be the best practices, and to work with the county health department, who actually has the memorandum of agreement, to manage our school health rooms, as I'm now told is the terminology they use. They don't call it a clinic, they don't call it the nurses' office, it's a health room. So that unfortunately led to a little bit of misunderstanding between staff and the public health department about clinics. There was also reference to our community schools as maybe, how do we get closer to there? The long story short is that our board is still owed the research and findings that we had asked for, but in the interest of time, it turned out that yesterday, Ms. Corbett Sanders and I were able to have a conference call with the public health department. I was able to talk with our staff yesterday afternoon, and what the public health department shared with us is that the board of supervisors recognize how important school nurses are to our students, and the fact that Fairfax County Public Schools only has one per 3,000 when the Virginia code recommends one per 1,000. The public health department has a five-year plan in place where they would like to get us closer to one nurse for every 2,000 students, which is just getting us closer, right? So the board supervisors have committed the $230,000 when you add in the benefits, to add to public health nurses to serve our schools. And so my proposal, getting this information that unfortunately should have come to the full board, and we can talk about that later, I would love to see our board match the board supervisors' commitment. We are long past due to serve our student population, where 25% have known health conditions, and our population needs continue to grow. This is more strategic than swapping out a clinic aide for a public health nurse in just our two community schools, because that's not the best practice, and that's not the model that the public health department recommends. So I truly hope that as we get a chance to talk more, I believe this is one of the most mission-critical things we need to do in the new budget. We have committed ourselves to social workers and psychologists, but getting more school nurses to support our health rooms in our schools is really important, and so I hope everyone will consider this to be something worth supporting next week.
All right. Do you want to go back? Okay. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Sure. And first, I want to address the concept that this is a late-to-the-table amendment on IAs. Let me make it very clear that this was, when we had the list of questions that were still outstanding in, when we first addressed the proposed budget, I had asked for a plan for how we could treat our IAs in an equitable manner, and in a manner that was consistent with how we treated our teachers. Our teachers, we addressed the pay gap of 95% to 105% of the market over three years and invested in it. And I am asking for equitable treatment for our IAs on the CIS scale, and what I've proposed here does do this in three years. There are 3,200 IAs on our staff. Some of them, as we heard passionately the other night, are significantly under even a living wage. And when we look at the workload that our IAs do in our classrooms, they, when the teacher is out of the classroom dealing with IEPs and other administrative matters, the IAs actually substitute for our teachers. They have a shorter contract, so often they go well beyond the call of duty, similar to our teachers, and work on off-hours to put plans together, to get professional certifications, and always keeping our students centered. So when we look at this, the list of objectives that we have here, I would hope that my colleagues would share a focus on what is the most impacting for our students first. And I know that there are, they're all very good options, but we do need to set a priority. And the priority on these people who are not only in our kindergarten classrooms, but they really, the majority of them are in inclusive classrooms, supporting our exceptional students with disabilities, or in our classrooms that are designated as special ed classrooms or self-contained. And so I just urge that, you know, we're talking about, they, 3,200 individuals, some of them making around $14 and change an hour, and working the 190-day schedule, but they also do their own professional development, and they're not compensated in the current contract. So this is a first step of treating, of getting our IAs to be treated as the professionals that they are, and I'd like us to at least make that first tranche, and then move forward in a three-year schedule. I did speak with Ms. Burden about the approach, and she did say that if we were to do this, we would be able to honor it over the next couple of years.
All right. You have a question? I'm sorry?
No.
Ms. Burden, you and I spoke about this, and you thought that a three-year plan was sustainable, correct?
Yes, it's 8.1 million is the total cost of this, and over three years, it's 2.7 million. And we discussed that two, we would, the 2 million would go on the list, and 700,000 would be funded out of year-end. Although this is not a one-time cost, we would build the full schedule into the fiscal 21 budget and be able to make that work.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Keys-Gamara, followed by Ms. Palchek, and then Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I realize we have some tough decisions to make, and I wanted to share my perspective and that of a number of advocates that I've spoken with. I am going to focus primarily on our culture in our schools, which I know we're all concerned about, but particularly addressing the concern with respect to the recent restraint and seclusion issue. Obviously, I had previously put forth the BIT proposal, but I'm also advocating for the revised proposal from staff. And the reason that I'm focusing on this, and I will speak on other things, but please let me know, Madam Chair, when my time, if you need me to have a go-back, I can.
I will keep, I will keep watch of your time for you.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it. I was, I'm sorry. But in any case, these behavior intervention teachers provide the level of professional training that we need to be able to provide quality care for our special ed students. I have visited a number of organizations, and you can clearly see the benefit of people who are well-trained, as opposed to those who come into an atmosphere and they simply try to figure it out. We have a crisis, I've said this before, and we need to restore trust. And so I, this is my top priority, although I care about a lot of things on here. I think that we have to be focused on sending a very clear message to our special education community that we are willing to do what it takes to fix this concern. For the same reason, I am supporting Ms. McLaughlin's recommendation with respect to school nurses. We have to have people who are trained to recognize problems when they exist. And while I appreciate the aides that we have, I have been concerned about, for example, the completion of threat assessments and things of that nature. When you are trained to recognize a crisis, it is dealt with more quickly. And so I see these two things working together. I have 28 seconds, but I wanted to make sure that I put that forth. I want to send a very clear message to our community that we want to do what is necessary to correct this problem, and I'll come to my other concerns later.
All right. Ms. Palchek.
Thank you. Apologize, I was stuck in a little traffic earlier. So I just did want to speak, and I appreciate my colleagues, we have really important motions in front of us. I think back in February, we were looking at different numbers and motions, and so I would like to offer a few tweaks, I think, in the light of compromise to try to reduce some of the motions that I had presented on here. So I guess the first one would be with the facilities trade staffing that originally included, I'm trying to find my list, I apologize, and it originally included several positions in the trades and apprentices, one security position, and one boundary coordinator position. So for this motion, I would like to offer an amendment based on the feedback from Mr. Plattenberg, that the two very critical positions for safety and security and staffing were the security position at $0.1 million and the boundary coordinator, especially if you start to go through this boundary process, please correct me if I'm wrong, at $0.2 million. And I was hoping to include in there at least two trades apprentices, which I believe Ms. Burden would be $0.14 million. So I know it's some pretty quick math. If I'm, if I'm correct on that, this reduces the facilities and trade staffing from 1 million to 0.44 million. So I think that's the approximate reduction in facilities and trade staffing. I still believe it's very important that we go through the study that I've asked that happen in the follow-on motion, but for this specific budget, I know we do have, and I agree with you, Ms. Keys-Gamara, to focus on what has come to light about the large support that's needed in our classrooms, especially in our special ed classrooms. So I would like, trying to reduce a little bit of my previous asks in order to go to help fund some of the others. I have 40 seconds. I know that I would like us to keep the MSA in there and to go for the grandfathering option in order to do that. I think that's a minimal cost to some of our most dedicated, long-term employees. And for the minimum wage, I don't know if Mr. Moon has brought up our change on that one, but we were hoping to get to 1550 an hour. It also starts to fix the flattening at the beginning of the scale, and it is only 0.87, $87,000 more than 1527. So I will have to take a go-back.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Palchek, and thank you for helping us thoughtfully reduce some of these numbers. I appreciate that. I still, well, I have my questions, and I'll take them up at the end. So Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I have a question on the nurses, because it's my understanding that currently the nurses in our schools are paid for by the health department. Is that, I guess, if Ms. Burton, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is, I need to know. Are the nurses paid for, are they employees of the school division, or are they paid for by Fairfax County Public Schools?
They're, they're employed by the county, and the county receives a per-contract or memo of understanding, I don't know if it's a memo, an MOA or MOU. They receive a $2 million payment from us to them to offset their costs.
But are they supervised by Fairfax County Public Schools, or are they supervised by the health department? In other words, as a medical professional, who supervises them?
They are supervised by the health department.
By the health department? Okay. So that's my question. Is the intent, if we employ additional nurses, is the intent that we will supervise their medical work? In other words, is the intent that we will begin to have our own medical professionals supervised by us? Or, in other words, how, how does this work with the payment and the supervision of medical professionals? I know that we would like to have more nurses, I get that. But since, since we have this agreement with the health department, how does, how does this work?
Madam Chair, if you could stop the clock for Ms. Strauss, so that she's not losing her time on this answer. I actually want to help, because this is, Ms. Burden is our finance person, and I welcome Teresa Johnson answering this question, because she understands the 29-page memorandum agreement. But Ms. Strauss, I'll give you the quick answer. This is no different than our school resource officers. We have a memorandum of understanding that the police department trains, hires, and manages the police officers in our building. Same with the public health nurses. They are trained, monitored, hired, supervised by the public health department. All we do is we get $4 million a year from the state, we give them $2 million to help offset the cost, they fund the rest. Mine was just to help bring dollars to the table. But the public health department, it's a shared responsibility that we have, and it's trying to bring some dollars to the table, because we've got an extra $2 million that we don't give to the public health department yet.
Ms. Strauss, this is, this is the best way, and Teresa, check me if I'm incorrect in saying it this way. We would be able, with the $200,000, to give that money to the county, which would allow them to provision two additional nurses to distribute, right? Working in collaboration with the health department to distribute, not necessarily not at the community schools, but to distribute through the system to support our students and our schools with health needs. We already have some nurses, the county deploys, and they work through our schools. This would really add two more to the pool. Think like the bits conversation almost, and we're adding bits to support additional behavioral intervention in schools. This really, as Ms. McLaughlin well said, really improves that ratio. And I do want to take responsibility here publicly that we did miscommunicate around the nurses' study. We did do some study work, and we didn't bring all of that work to when we had our budget amendment and follow-on, and I take responsibility for that. I didn't communicate that as well with the staff. We have that work, and we'll be glad to share in the appropriate time and place with the board some of that additional detail.
Okay, so this, this money would, would in?
This would allow the county to get two additional nurses to then distribute strategically across the system.
So it would still, it would still fit into the relationship that we currently have with the health department?
Yes.
So they would still be connected to the medical professional oversight?
Yes, yes.
Which is important, because the health department has many more resources?
Right.
And providing medical services.
That's correct.
That was kind of the bottom line.
Yes, ma'am.
That gives me comfort. Great, thank you.
Oh, you're leaving time on the table, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Evans, and then Mr. Moon.
Thank you. So I had one procedural question.
So I had one procedural question, of course. I feel very strongly about the equity in the after-school programs, which we, we have a proposal on and I do appreciate the direction we're going into. This is, I guess, a technical question. Since we approved it as part of the, the advertised budget, do we need to re-approve it to keep that rolling or can we just assume that that's, that's moving in the right direction?
That is moving forward and what would be happening is that we would, as, as was directed, that would be recommendations made in the fiscal year 20, the next fiscal year 21 budget. So it is moving forward with recommendations that will be brought back.
So we, I don't need to, we don't need to revisit it as part of the approved budget then?
Not as part of the approved budget for this, for the upcoming one.
We're already good. Okay, excellent, thank you. I do remain concerned about the needs-based funding formula that is included in this budget. And I have expressed my concerns a number of times. So I am planning to bring a follow-on motion, which will probably be a fairly simple one, asking us to revisit this and asking the superintendent to bring back a formula for the, the next budget that will ensure that our, our high-poverty schools receive adequate needs-based staffing. I'm working on the, the language of this and I will be calling colleagues to see what they can support on this, but I do think that this is something that we do need to revisit and make sure that if we look at the, again, the 188 positions that were divvied up from the reserve, very few of them go to our high-poverty schools. They just do, I, I've looked through and we have some schools that are receiving two and three and I believe even four teachers out of this, but the highest needs schools are either staying flat or they, they receive one more. So I will be working on language, hoping that we can revisit this and improve that formula in the, in the 2021 budget. As far as the Avid Amendment is concerned, I just, did just resend everybody the information that I had received as part of the budget question and answer and that I had raised in a previous work session. The, this was as a result of, I was contacted about, at the large Avid programs, the possibility of having a staff person just for Avid. We have four schools that have at least 150 Avid students in, in their Avid programs. Staff came back and suggested another approach for this to kind of spread it around a little bit more would be to provide a period for a coordinator at, at all 21 schools. And that's where we get the, the .2 million to provide a 0.17 position at all of our Avid schools to, to help with coordination of that program. I can work with staff, again, to see if there are different ways of, of, of cutting this, but at this point, that's, that's what my proposal is and I can, again, the question and answer will provide more information about that. But I, I believe that because Avid is, is coordinated differently in different places, correct? In some cases, we have Avid teachers that, that have five periods, five full periods, others where it's a variety of teachers that each take one and they, they, they do their coordinating differently. The Avid program recommends that every school with an Avid program have a coordinator who has an extra period for planning, much as the department chairs, for example, get an extra period. So this amendment would provide an extra period for that. Again, I can have some conversations to see if there's some way to maybe phase it in or, or start with the largest programs first, but, but that's my intention and I'm sure I'm just about out of time. But I, is that, okay. So that's all I have to say for now.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Board Chair. You know, from my angle where I'm sitting, I cannot see the clock, so I'll just take all time, all the time that I need.
[laughing].
So, so my understanding, you know, basically, we are, we are starting with $6 million on the table to address all the amendments. And we have thus far 9.1. It sounds as if there are some board members may have additional requests on top of the It will be difficult for me to consider, you know, at this point in time, any additional requests because first of all, I don't know what the additional amount would be. We only have, it's just another week, you know, before we have to come up with a, you know, final budget. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to completely exclude the possibility of considering something different, you know, additional, additional requests, but, you know, the more we wait, it's less likely that I would be in support of anything additional to on top of what I already have. With a 9.1, we have to somehow find a way to get to 6.0. And I appreciate the fact that Ms. Palchuk was reducing some of our requests that, so free up some money to be able to come to 6.0. And I strongly urge my colleagues, other colleagues, to be able to do something similar because at the end of the day, we only have $6 million and we cannot, you know, we're not going to be able to support everything on the table. So with that said, I'll be supporting a living wage of $15.50. I know that's actually going up from $200,000 to basically $300,000, asking for another $100,000. However, since, you know, Ms. Palchuk is reducing our request for, if I'm not mistaken, from facility trade staffing of a $1 million to less than half a million. So that's creating, you know, half a million dollars of sort of revenue, if you call that a revenue that we can, you know, use to reduce the 9.1. So, so thank you for that. What I quite didn't, probably I didn't quite hear this right, is custodial staffing, you doing anything with the custodial staffing? Ms. Palchuk?
At this point, I did not offer that. I know we had a conversation, so feel free to share your mind.
So it's going to remain as half a million dollars with nine positions? Is that, is that correct? I just wanted to make sure that they were...
Yes, I believe that's the correct amount, Ms. Burden. The nine positions were the 50,000?
Okay, so...
Half a million?
I mean, I will, I will support, I will support your gracious reduction of a facility trade staffing to a less than half a million. And I will also support custodial staffing of half a million. You know, there are other, you know, everything, what I see on the table, they are something that we need. However, you know, at the end of the day, since, again, we have to go down to 6.0, you know, there will be some of the things I will, if, you know, board members are unwilling to reduce the amount of requests, I'm gonna have to simply not be able to support. So I urge, I cannot see the clock.
Okay, it's your time.
So I urge my board members to be a, you know, a little more thoughtful, not that I'm not, I'm not saying that you're not thoughtful, to bring down the request so that we can balance the budget.
Mr. Wilson, do you want to go before I go to go-backs?
Oh, thank you. I have just a couple of questions regarding the nurses. I'm a little confused by the last conversation because it describes it as nurses for the community schools, but Dr. Brayburn didn't describe it that way. Can you just clarify?
Absolutely, Mr. Wilson. Since you're just joining us and we can talk offline some more, but the, the bottom line is that originally, the idea was to see if we would exchange the clinic aides for school nurses, but staff had not had the opportunity to bring to the board the information from the February follow-on motion, which is that wouldn't be the optimal strategic way to deploy the funding. It's actually to close the gap and add the school nurses that we need and how they are deployed across all 200 of our schools. And so this, the board supervisors are already committing funds to add two additional nurses to help us close this gap from the one per 3,000 to get closer to one, to 2,000. So all we'd be doing is matching the board supervisor's commitment that in order to better serve our kids, we've got to close this gap of school nurses to students' ratio.
So I apologize, I must have come in too quietly for you to notice my arrival.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson.
A few minutes, a few minutes before Ms. Palchuk. So, but I did make it and, but I thank you for acknowledging me ultimately. So, okay, so it's not dedicated to the community schools. It's just, that's just, was in your description, but really it's, it's just enhance...
That was actually the staff recommendation that they brought to us last week and then we discussed on Monday. And then as I shared during my turn, we found out from the public health department yesterday and then from staff yesterday afternoon, that didn't exactly incorporate the findings. And so what we have in front of us is really a best practice approach.
Okay. And, and the, with regards to the health rooms in our schools, is, you've talked about this issue before in previous meetings. Is there, is there a change in the vision that, that we're sort of moving towards that maybe the public could understand? For example, I'm just, it's just a question that I had is, you know, now with the sort of increased number of licensed nurse practitioners who have more ability to provide medical services to, are we, is that sort of where you're thinking this is heading towards?
So in, in the interest of time, I'll, I'll just share with the full board what's, what I understand to date. The board supervisors did benefit from a presentation by the public health department about a month or so ago with their five-year plan on how best to serve through this memorandum of under, of agreement, our school health rooms. So they have a strategic plan in place, how to narrow it down with public health nurses being at the ratio I've described, and it's simply going to take some funding efforts. But again, it's the goal of getting school nurses into our schools more frequently to help augment and serve in areas, in ways that the clinic aides don't have the healthcare training and also the intervention and prevention of healthcare and wellness or, I should say, health and wellbeing, not healthcare.
That's helpful, I guess, because we've had, we've had sort of brief halted conversations about the concept of community schools and what that entails. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm sort of probing a little bit to try to make sure I understand...
And ideally, Mr. Wilson, for, for community schools, when you do put in a school health clinic, that can involve a physician, that can involve a nurse, and it's much more complex. Fairfax County Public Schools and the county health department are not ready to move to that robust of a design yet. That's much further down the road, but in the meantime, we have a deep need for public health nurses in our schools right now.
Okay, well, that's, that's very helpful. And then I, I had one other question and this is for Ms. Hines. With regards to the AART change, in the, in the little bit of description that we have, it talks about 33 schools have a .5 AART position. Do you know offhand of those schools, how many were funding the other half? Because your proposal contemplates increasing that to a full position.
I don't know offhand. Can you help me explain this, Ms. Burden? When we look at the narrative, right? That's what you're looking at? The narrative?
Right, yeah, the narrative.
Okay, and what page are we on in the narrative?
Of the 46 Title I schools, 33 have the halftime AART.
Right.
The other 13 have a full-time. And the ones that have the full-time are actually centrally funded. And we did that in FY 2014 to try to promote the Young Scholars Program and use of advanced academic curriculum across the school.
So the, the .5 AARTs aren't centrally funded?
They are centrally funded.
Okay, the .5. So my question is, in those schools, have, have the school principals elected to pay for the other half so they have a full-time AART? And in other words, it's sort of a gauge of, of the interest of the school administrator themselves?
I don't have the, I don't have the number of schools that may or may not trade for that, broken down by Title I schools, but 81 of our schools overall have full-time AARTs.
Okay.
So that gives you a sense of kind of the level of interest in providing that level of staffing for the school.
Yeah, that's helpful. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilson, I just want to add, as the liaison to the Advanced Academic Resource Advisory Council, the APAC, that this has been a recommendation on the table for many, many years now. So, many years and we're finally going to...
Yeah, it's, and that's, that's helpful. I just, because we're, as Mr. Wilson said, we're looking at ways to, you know, to get to six.
Right, no, and I appreciate your question. I just wanted you to know that that's been a longstanding unfunded recommendation from one of our committees that has shown, shown...
As several have already noted, there, there are many, many needs.
Right, right.
And this is a short list of them, so...
Right, and that's what I did. Exactly. We, we are, my colleagues, I really do appreciate your passion and we are going to try our best, but remember, we have had not the ability to fund this, that fully funded budget in so many years and, and I want to get as much of this done as we can. So I really appreciate us all looking and talking and, and working together to, to do that. Ms. Burden, I did have a question and maybe Ms. Wiggington, you can help with this. The teacher, the teacher pay scale, did, did we do that over three or four years? Was it three or was it four? I, I...
Three.
It was three?
Three years, yes.
Three years? Okay, all right.
18, 19, and 20.
Okay. All right. I thought, I just thought I remembered it differently.
The reason there may be confusion about that among board members, when I arrived, there was a multi-year plan that I think was beyond three years. We aggressively, from in last year's budget and this year, said we want to close on getting to market. So we, frankly, we accelerated our original plan. And I want to say, again, Alice, you might have been, or Marty, you would have been here, the original plan was a longer plan.
The original plan was...
Yes, five years.
It was originally a five-year plan.
That's right, exactly.
We recommended a four-year plan. It went to five. We've now done it in three. And prior to enhancing the scale, we did infuse about $40 million so that we could raise the slump for our mid-career teachers.
Right. I, I knew I was remembering a much longer timeframe and I just wanted to ensure that we knew exactly where we were. So I believe that everybody wants to go back, so I will start at the top of the list again with Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Great, so it's been really great hearing everybody. Just a couple of things, Mr. Moon. I also have put a couple of things on the table from my perspective where I would try to shave off here and one of them is, and I said this already, but just to repeat, to fund two of the get-to-green positions for this year and put off the third one for next year, which would save, I think, 0.1, you know? And then I also, and, you know, again, Ms. Darnett Kofax, as the second on this, will have to think about this and get back to me, but I think if we rolled out the AART full-time positions in our Title I schools over three years instead, that would, I'm guessing, would save 0.6 million at this point. Because I think the two-year cost was going to be about 3 million of the AART, was going to be about 3 million or a little bit more. So if we put it over three years, that would be a million dollars a year. That's my guess, anyway. So I'm, that's 0.7 million that I'm, you know, willing to, to put down. A couple of questions. I'm wondering if there's anything in the restraint and seclusion placeholder that could be one-time money out of year-end funds? Can somebody think about that? We could look at the 300,000 that would be directed towards training, but I would have to ask Ms. Burden if that's a possibility.
Ms. Burden, or Mr. Smith?
I'm assuming you're only doing it one time.
The training, the training for seclusion and restraint, Ms. Johnson said that could be, a board member was asking, could that be considered, could we do that as one-time money and do it at year-end?
Yes, we could do that. If we're only doing it once, yes.
Okay.
So, so that would mean, we want to do it every year, though. So that would mean every year, we would have to refund that money. Okay, so that's not ideal.
Yes.
It wouldn't be ideal.
You could pull it out of year-end and then you would have to then build it into future budgets.
Which we do sometimes, so, you know...
Right. If, if we did year-end for that, just to say to the board what I would do, or I would want a commitment or direction from the board, is I would build that into the FY 21 budget. I'd bring it into the budget and not, it's just a one-time. Because I do think, as Ms. Johnson said, this training needs to become part of how we do business in Fairfax County and I, it's, it's going to be more than a one-time thing.
Okay, it's, I mean, you're right, it's not ideal. And I'm not necessarily putting that on the table because we definitely want to make sure we don't lose that. We desperately... We desperately need it, I get that. And just, Ms. Corbett Sanders, on the IA salaries. I appreciate, I didn't mean to suggest that it's late in our process right now. But when you look at that list right there, and we know that we're trying to shave $3 million, and there's that one item that's $2 million, it just kind of, it says that, you know, we're going to have to give up a lot of other things in order to do it. And we all care about IAs. I was an IA myself. I know what it's like to try to pay bills on that pay. It's ridiculous, right? We have to do better. But when I look at that number, and I look at all the other things we want to do, and that we have to have some shared responsibility here, I wonder if we could make that number smaller and build into, you know, we did this strategic plan for our other pay. We did not do any kind of strategic look at IA pay. And maybe that's what we need to do, do a piece of it now, but then, you know, take a longer-term look and figure out how we can fix the pay scale for IAs on a longer-term basis. And I don't know, I'm happy to work with you, but looking at that $2 million item, I'm uncomfortable thinking about all the opportunity costs, all the things that we would have to give up on that list in order to do that one thing. And I don't want anyone up here, especially in an election year, to have to say or look like they don't care about IA salaries, because that's really not the case for any of us. So I would just caution us to be careful about, you know, how much we're asking for in this list. So, thank you.
Happy to talk about it, because I have some ideas on how we can find money. All right, thank you. Ms. Burden and Ms. Wiggington, if you can, because I'm doing my own math here, but if you can look at those, if we can keep doing a tally just for, and there's not an agreement yet, but, you know, Ms. Palchuk offered some concessions, and Ms. Hines offered some concessions. And I have my math. I'll check with you rather than saying it out loud. But if you just keep doing it as we go, if other people offer concessions, to see where we are at the end of this name.
Okay, so, beginning at 9.1, and Ms. Palchuk offered up half of the facilities trades, so that takes it to 8.6. And then moving the training for restraint and seclusion to one-time funds is a .3 reduction, taking us to 8.3. But I did not get the.
I put up 0.7 between the Get to Green one position and rolling out the AART positions over three years instead of two. So that saves, I believe, 0.7 altogether.
We'll double-check that.
All right, and then I'll just check in with you from time to time, so you can give me where we are, if that's, we're getting closer. All right. Ms. Schultz, you would be next for a go-back?
So I had originally expressed concern about the way, frankly, the lack of innovation in the way in which the world language enhancements were brought. As I understand it, we're 2.5 million, you know, whatever the gap is, it's 2.5 million. 9.1 to 6.6 is 2.5, you know. So, you know, you look for, okay, what are the big-ticket items up there? And there's a couple of 1.6s. And, you know, the question is, what are we going to do, and what makes the most difference to closing the gap? And you can edge away at .1 and .4 and .04 all you want. And the reality is, you got to get to 2.5 at a minimum. So I don't think that there's innovation in adding the languages the way they are and concentrating them only in the service academy schools. I do think that we could get more innovation with the rollout of technology. I mean, the whole purpose of what we're doing, on the one hand, is rolling out technology. But this proposal says, put a bunch of kids in a bus and have them double-pack their periods during the day and lose opportunities to be taught in their base school, and transport them in the middle of the day on, you know, 18 and a half million miles worth of bus miles. I just don't see, I just don't see that this is an enormous value add. I haven't heard the scope of how many more students this will benefit. I have heard from a number of my principals that the scaffolding of language from elementary to middle to high school isn't necessarily supported, and that becomes actually more difficult to offer upper-level languages in some of the schools because the cohort of students doesn't maintain necessarily. They sort of get burned out if they're taking a language from elementary to middle to high, and at some point, they want to do what we created, what we wisely created in some of our other work, which is creating the opportunity for more electives. So I think, as much as some, you know, love is for this idea, I think it should have been brought to us with more innovation that would actually allow more kids to access them. So I'd say, take a big first swing with an axe and just lovingly let that go, and let's revisit it another time.
Does the maker want to talk to that at all? Okay. I would give you that time right now, and then.
Thank you. So we, let's unpack this amendment. So if folks can turn to number four in our package, we have, let's see, for .5 million, we are permanently funding existing traded world language positions at academies, which are current, which, they're traded positions. So this would be to restore that funding to the academies, so they are not having to put their own resources to them. Secondly, we are looking to staff our academies at Chantilly High School, Edison High School, Falls Church High School, Marshall High School, and West Potomac with at least two language programs. And I mean, we're starting with two here. And those programs include what they currently offer in addition to American Sign Language, Arabic, Chinese, Korean, and Vietnamese, all of which have been shown to have great student interest. I will say that each academy would have different programs based on the student interest there. And if that interest were not to arise, then we wouldn't be necessarily spending on those programs there. Thirdly, adding American Sign Language at Fairfax Academy for .1 million. Fourth, to add a resource teacher in our online campus office to focus on building the online curriculum that Ms. Schultz referred to. And then, and so that's it. Those are the four pieces of this. I'm happy to look into chipping away at this. I'm not, I certainly do not support eliminating this entirely. This was in our initial budget proposal back in January. And I will use this opportunity to say as well that the tail has been wagging the dog throughout this budget process. It is my belief, and some of the stays may disagree, that we were given essentially an amount by the county executive, told to stick to that amount, and we are, as a result, halting our innovation as a system in order to comply with the demands of the county executive and the Board of Supervisors. And I don't think that's the way we run a budget process. The fact that we are limited to $6 million to do all of the wonderful things we want to do with this system is abhorrent. And I think this process has been flawed from the start. The fact that in January, when we had an opportunity to speak to all of these amendments, and we didn't even have that opportunity, speaks to the flawed nature of the process.
All right, you can speak to that further during your go-back. I was wanting you to answer Ms. Schultz's question. And Ms. Schultz, you still have nine seconds, if you want to throw something in.
I gladly yield my nine seconds back. Each one of you can take, you know, yeah, .9 seconds each.
Thank you. .9 seconds each. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
So before I speak to any more of these proposals, I want to see if I can elevate this up to the highest macro level. Because I'm a little troubled at what's happening here and what I've actually seen happen for the eight budgets that I've now worked on in the eighth year that I'm in on the school board. We have a $3 billion budget. We had our CFO stand before us when she presented the superintendent's budget in January and say that even if we had a $20 million gap between what we thought we might get from the county and what we would end up needing to build, that's not hard for an organization of our size to find the cost savings. This $3 million that I am so impressed by the generosity of the various makers of saying, how can we maybe shave off $100,000 here and $500,000 there? I want to kind of maybe raise this back up and say, $3 million differential from the $6 million we were told we got to, quote, "play with"? Understand, that's 1/10th of 1% of this $3 billion budget. So Dr. Brabran, this highly dedicated leadership team, all of us, 12 who work so hard, we are spending time talking about 1/10th of 1%. And meanwhile, we have a $3 billion budget that I haven't heard a single one of us say to what the superintendent proposed, maybe we need to change 1% of his budget. So I really am afraid that we're not being as efficient and effective with each other's time, with the superintendent's time. One easy solution is that we focus on just saying, of the $9 million, do seven or more of us believe each one of these things is a strategic value add? And then, if it's a $3 million gap, direct the superintendent to go find 1/10th of 1%. Because, you guys, honestly, what we're doing was we're basically saying we only had jurisdiction over $9 million, or $6 million. That's not our role. And for people who are worried that it's hard, again, look, the big numbers scare people. 1/10th of 1% is not hard for any good organization. Usually, organizations find themselves having to cut 1%, 5%, 10%. We're saying 1/10th of 1% find the cost savings. So Dr. Brabran, I think what I would do is invite you to maybe speak to this, because the more your Board of 12 sits here and starts to fret about finding $100,000 here and $100,000 there, that's not worth your time, staff's time, or any of our time. And I think it's actually, it could be very problematic for what we're signaling to the public, and.
Ms. McLaughlin, I appreciate that comment.
Yeah, I was watching the clock there.
It stops at two. I don't know why it's stopping at two. Yeah, it won't stop. It doesn't go to zero.
Then, thank you, Ms. Kofax. I'm done.
And Dr. Brabran. Dr. Brabran, Ms. McLaughlin asked you a question.
What I've seen the board do tonight is try to work to trim the expense side. And I do very much appreciate that. I do, I do understand the spirit of what you've just said. I've done a little bit of work with staff, I have. And one area that I shared, even as I reminded the board when I reshared the budget, we did put in some additional dollars to replenish the staffing reserve. As you know, in the strategic, in the budget we put out earlier, we moved, and Ms. Evans has talked about it already with the formula, we moved the reserve forward for some positions. And we put in an additional amount of money around that reserve. I think it could be possible, if we can trim some of the requests, to sort of meet halfway and maybe take something, consider to take something from that reserve to try to meet that request and find a place in the middle. But I don't want to, because we did change the way we distributed staffing. We can't predict enrollment with 100% certainty. And the reserve was to make sure that as we made this change, that we would be able to continue to support our schools. So there's a balance there from that reserve. But that is something I think we can look at and, you know, finish calculating the numbers that you all have talked about, trying to reduce the expense, and see whether this board thinks that we, see if this board thinks that a little bit of that strategic staffing replenishment could be done to meet some of the last pieces of this amendment. So that's what I would say to you for further thought. But I don't have a plan tonight. I'd like to continue to listen to board members, but say, if there was a place where, you know, do we want to bog down the entire board and organization over a very small amount of money? I certainly want to work with the board and find a way to meet as much as possible the needs. And I want to remind, we have a second year of a fully-funded budget. We've done a lot more to meet the needs than we have in a long time. That said, there are still unfunded needs. We have a lot to do to restore 10 years of cuts. But I don't want this process that's gone so well and collaboratively to get bogged down at the end over a very small amount. And I share Ms. McLaughlin's point on that. So I think frankly, as I keep listening to the conversation, if we can, as the board is doing, trim some of the requests, that collective ability to trim, that we could maybe look at whether we could trim the reserve and bring down those revenues to distribute to some of the amendments that are in front of us.
Thank you both. Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamarra. I am very glad to have followed both Dr. Brabran and Ms. McLaughlin, because it is a point that I have made in the past. And I just want to bring some of my colleagues' attention to some things that are in this budget that we might, you know, consider not restraining ourselves within this $6 million. So, for example, buses. We have replacement buses with over $1 million more projected in fiscal year '20 versus fiscal year '19. And so it begs the question, why couldn't we consider doing things like keeping certain line items flat? We also have the awards and banquets, which has $220,000 more in it for fiscal year '20 than it is in fiscal year '19. We have the ACE program, where we put in $700,000 to increase there. I fully support ACE, but it begs the question, when we are looking at other things, do we need to put a full $700,000 in versus if we trim some there as well? And, you know, when we're talking about what the core values of this organization are, it is that we are focused on education in our classrooms to ensure that every child succeeds. And so, and for example, on the budgets and awards, that line item had been increased for fiscal year '19, and we still were, we brought it back down, or we didn't actually intentionally bring it back down, but that's how much we spent, was $200 and something thousand less. And then we added it back in for fiscal year '20. And so it's one of those things where we're here negotiating over whether or not we want to give our classroom staff appropriate salaries and whether we want to pay our staff a living wage. And so if we truly are focusing on a values budget, then we should be looking at what we value. And what we value are things that are up here on this screen, and a little humor brought to the table. But it's also what we value and how the rest of this budget works. And in previous years, we did a deep dive into what was in the budget item. But this was where we said, oh, well, there's $6 million, so why do we need to dig into the rest? Well, I think to be able to get to where we want to be, we have to look at both pieces. Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, followed by Ms. Palchuk, and then Ms. Strauss.
I'm very happy to follow Madam Chair, Ms. Corbett Sanders, because I wholeheartedly agree. I did start off by saying what my priorities are. That is consistent with what I have communicated to our community. But I am absolutely concerned about other things on this list, the living wage, getting the arts in our Title I schools. And I think that I am comfortable asking the superintendent to help us to take that deeper dive. Because when I look at some of the things that Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned and weigh it against what we're looking at in this list. it against what we're looking at in this list, it's kind of a no-brainer, right, in my thinking? So I certainly would like to do that. I will make one other comment with respect to the world languages, Mr. McElveen. I think, as I recall, I think that there were a number of comments from members of this board about having a greater focus on the earlier grades. I am a little disappointed that we haven't heard a counterproposal from staff as a result because I know that that was said a few times in our work sessions. And I know that that's supported by research. And I continue to have concern about being focused on the academies when a lot of our students have difficulty getting to those academies. So I certainly want the world language enhancement, but I had expected at this point that we would get more to focus on the earlier grades as well. And that's a commentary. I do think it's important, Mr. McElveen, please don't misunderstand what I'm saying, but I do want it to see how we could enhance the earlier grades because of, because of research says that's where we should be focused.
All right, thank you. Ms. Palchuk, and then Ms. Strauss.
Okay, thank you. Well, I had slightly different comments, but very happy to follow Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Keys-Gamarra because I wholeheartedly agree with what you've shared. Number one, we are in a very different place than where we were three, four years ago. And so it does seem that we are kind of playing with some very tiny edges here. I think, I appreciate that, my colleagues, we've come up with, I mean, if you look at this, a list of some pretty important priorities and areas where, as we talk about the fully funded budget, this is the part that's not quite fully funded, right? The additional needs that, you know, understandably, I think as responsible county and system, we're trying to take cautious steps to reinvesting. So with that in mind, I do, I appreciate everyone who also has offered some chipping away at the amendments. And regarding the world language, and this is something I've given a lot of thought to, and I hope we can get to a better place. As you know, as a world language teacher, 100%, I really want us to start earlier. High school is absolutely, it's not too late. For some things, it's not; for some things, it is. And I guess looking at the budget that's outlined for the world language portion, it does appear, I believe, that 1.5 million of, that 1.6 million is for academy staffing, three different types of academy staffing. So what academies are using to trade, offering two additional languages at various academies, and then adding ASL to Fairfax Academy. So for the online campus, 100% support that. I wouldn't support that elementary school, but I think by the time you get to high school, I really want us, in such a large system with so many languages spoken at home and in our classrooms, to start to, I think that is an area where we can become a little more nimble with our older students. For the other academies, you know, I think it's probably important to fund the existing trades, just as in other areas, we're trying to make up for what we see as a need. I would be much more comfortable funding that. For the other two, the open to academies languages and Fairfax Academy, I guess I would just love to hear from Mr. McElveen or Mr. Moon, sort of the need you've heard there, or if we can maybe start to find a way to understand where the need is and how to fund that moving forward. So I think I'm near the end, but I just want to share, I agree with my previous colleagues on that.
All right, thank you. Ms. Strauss, and then Ms. Evans.
Thank you. If, in fact, the superintendent is going to see if he can find a little more money, and if my colleagues are willing to shave a little more, which I hope people do, I would caution us, let the superintendent, if he thinks he can find a little more money, I would caution us not, for us to find places in the budget. I, you know, respect people saying that maybe we could find bus replacement, award ceremonies. There are real downsides to, for us to look for, specific areas in the school budget, particularly at this late stage. Bus replacements is a real dark hole. We need to have functioning transportation systems. It's very easy to say, "Well, we don't need to buy as many." There are real negative consequences to not doing our bus replacement. We are just digging our way out of some terrible dark holes that we got ourselves into during bad budget times when we did not replace buses. We are finally getting back to actually celebrating our employees through FCPS honors and awards. We don't want to go back to those dark times when we didn't have enough money to say thank you to our employees. So if the superintendent feels he can squeeze a little harder to help fund some of the things board members would like to fund, I would let staff figure out the best way to do that because they have a much better idea of how best to do that without any negative consequences, particularly when we have to make decisions here in the last week. So I strongly recommend to let them make those decisions if, in fact, that is their intent at this point. And I do hope that our colleagues will also look hard to maybe look at shaving some of these areas as well so that we can negotiate to find someplace in the middle in another week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Evans, followed by Mr. Moon.
So going back to the reserve, how many positions do we have remaining in the reserve now, after the 188 are taken out?
Well, we started with 260 that was included in the proposed budget, but, you know, we're in May, so a large portion of those have already been allocated.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your, how many, after we take out the 188, how many do we have in the staffing reserve?
260.
250 are remaining, okay.
260.
260, all right. So Dr. Brabran, when you were talking before about finding money, were you saying, "Take it out of that" or something else?
The budget that I proposed replenished the staffing reserve, and we had, I believe it was 4.3 million to do that. I just want to say tonight, we've been, you know, our folks have been doing the calculations from what people have already put on the table. We're at 7.3 million. I can commit to you tonight that I will work with the Budget Chair and Vice Chair to make the adjustments necessary to meet that number, if the board feels what's shared tonight represents the work that, the work that they've done.
But while we're on my time--
Yeah, sorry.
Are you talking about taking it out of the staffing reserve?
Well, that's something I've thrown out tonight. I would go back and review everything with my team one more time--
Okay.
--to see if there are other places, but that would be one place that I would--
Okay.
--consider.
So I am concerned about that because I would urge that we not take it out of the staffing reserve because right now, again, we have high-poverty schools and we have schools with very high mobility that get an influx of students mid-year, and I would not want to denude the staffing reserve, particularly when we have not allocated large numbers to our high-poverty schools. So that's my comment on that, is I don't see that as a great place to find extra funds. With the Title I change, is, when would that go into effect? The leadership team has suggested going from the current number, which I believe is, is it 40% or 42%? Is it 40?
Title I would be FY '21. We would be holding harmless in the budget this coming year.
So we would not change, we would not change the number for, in '20?
That's correct.
Doesn't, okay, so that doesn't impact it. I was actually going to ask how that might affect the AART figure up there, but, so I will just say, actually, that's heartening because I actually hope we can save that, the Title I number. I actually, going to 55%, I think could have some negative impacts on quite a number of our schools. So I will say, just talking about what I see as priorities among the things brought by my colleagues, I do support the behavior intervention specialists. I do think that those are important, so I would hope we could fully fund what's up there now. I think it's clear that we need more than the 17 that we have now. I do think that the AARTs at our Title I schools are very important. I would be reluctant to do it over three years. You know, we've got 13 that have it now, and it would be great to get it in all of our Title I schools. I appreciate, Ms. Hines, you looking at ways to shave, but I do think that that's a particularly important position. So I would hope we could keep those in there personally. We do need to do something with our IAs. So I support improvements there. I certainly support improvements in living wage. I'll have to take a look at the 1550 versus the 1527, which was in the original amendment, and I think at one point it was 1514, so, but I do believe we have to do something substantial for living wage. And of course, I support my own amendment on Avid, but perhaps I can work on that to make that a little less expensive as well. So those are my comments about what we've got up there at this time.
All right, Mr. Moon, and then Mr. Wilson, did you want to go back or not? You're okay. Okay, so Mr. Moon, and then I will start on my round three of go-backs.
Okay. Okay, Madam Budget Chair, I cannot see the clock, so don't blame me if I go over. Okay, thank you. In addition to other budget amendments on the table that I forgot to mention, my support for a MSA, a 1% in lieu of 1% bonus, 1% MSA, that's, I'll be supporting that. And as to the suggestion for, you know, potential of going back to what we passed back in, back in February, look at other budget items, I am very reluctant to do that at this point in time. I mean, there are so many things, otherwise we would be going back and re-looking at it. I don't think we do have sufficient time to do that. You know, there were some suggestions made to look at bus fleets, ACE program, et cetera. For ACE program, that, you know, I could go on and on and on, but I would like to ask my board members to take a look at a budget question related to that, exactly where that $740,000 additional money is going into, whether that is our enrichment programs actually bringing revenue. It's a revenue generating program, but there are other items that require additional support, including board's decision on enhancing compensation and benefits. That, we need to pay for that, but that is where the $740,000 is going. So again, I'm asking board members to look at that. As to Mrs. McLaughlin's suggestion about asking, directing basically a superintendent find some money, that's a great idea. That's a great idea. That's something that, you know, formal board, long, long ago, you know, 10, 12, 13, 14 years ago, at times did that, directing superintendent to come up with $10 million from somewhere. You could go even more detail, $10 million from central administration, $2 million from supply account, something from something. Or you could just give a lump sum for him to come up with a, you know, a solution. But once we do that, once we do that, we need to respect what it comes up with. Then we shouldn't be complaining afterwards that, "I didn't like your cutting this or doing it this way or that way." So that is a caution I want to give to my board members based upon my experience, but this whole amount, I agree, that $3 million, now with some suggested cost to savings from some board members, that's not even $3 million. So we may be even talking about 2.5, even less. That is very doable, and if, you know, Mr. McElveen, I fully support your advocacy, that's my advocacy as well. I've been a champion of world language program for two decades, two decades, and I want to be able to support that, but at the same time, as you suggested, if there is any room for, to be able to deliver enhanced world language program in a little more creative way, a little different ways, then I would like to be able to sit down with you with an instructional step to go over that, whether there's a way to trim the amount a bit. But at the end of the day, if the board believes that we just don't have enough revenue, $6 million is enough, is not enough, then I don't mind supporting a motion to direct the superintendent finding the delta. But once we do that again, we need to respect the superintendent's decision, however he does it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Moon. So we will be going into round three. We were scheduled to go until 8:30. We can go longer, of course, as the board wishes, however long we will go. But I will continue the same round as we have continued. So if you don't want to go back when I call you, just like Mr. Wilson declined this time, but I'm starting back at the top with Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Schultz, and then Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, so, you know, always at this point in the process, a week out, we find ourselves having to live with the budget that we have, right? And so we can bellyache about revenue if we want to, but the fact is, we've been fully funded in what we've asked for the last two years. So, you know, this is what we've got, right? And always at this time of year, we are dealing in $100,000 here and $100,000 there. That's what happens when you get to the end, right? I mean, that's just the reality. I think the idea of Dr. Brabran helping us out with $100,000 here or $100,000 there is not unreasonable. I would just say two things about that. One is, I remember when I was first on the board and we directed the superintendent to find $7 million, and, you know, eight months later, we discovered where that $7 million came out of, and we were like, "What? We didn't tell you to do that." And the superintendent said, "Well, sure you did." So I don't want to vote for anything that I don't know what it is. So Dr. Brabran, if you're going to find money for us between now and next Thursday, I would like to know what it is and what it's coming out of. Also, I came to the table tonight cutting. So if you're going to find $1.6 million or whatever it is, I'm going to ask my colleagues to find cuts in what you've asked for because the AART positions, we've already spread them out over two years. We should have been doing this for our Title I schools. We know that we have our Advanced Academic Independent Review coming up. We know we're going to have to fund more resources for our schools when it comes to that. So Dr. Brabran, if you're going to come up with that money, I appreciate it, but I may very well pull back my offer to cut down the AART positions by the .6 million and keep it at 1.6 million and ask my colleagues to come up with something else. So, thank you.
All right, I missed Mr. McElveen on round two, so I'm going to put him in here, and then we'll follow by Ms. Schultz and Ms. McLaughlin.
So, yes, let's go back to the topic of world languages. So about three or four years ago, we actually funded world languages in all of our elementary schools, and it wasn't implemented. And so the idea that we would now revisit that, put bad money after good, or bad money or good money after bad money, is offensive to me. However, I'm more than happy to fund at the elementary school. The problem is, the LTC program is not working. And staff presented that very clearly in the work session, and that's all we have at elementary right now. That's how screwed up it is. So if we put money towards that program, we are putting good money after bad. And so staff asked us for the time to look at the LTC program, to see how to reform our elementary school world language program. So that's on hold. So those advocating for money at the elementary school level, I would be grateful to know what you're advocating for. So let's talk about the conversation about learning languages at high school as apparently not being as valuable as learning at earlier ages. Now, I certainly agree that the earlier you learn languages, the more likely they are to take. However, I didn't learn Chinese until I was in college, and I use it every day. I'm perfectly fluent in it. And our students, I believe, are qualified enough to learn language at high school and still be successful in life, having learned it. Let's talk about equity. So I would be more than happy to put new languages in every school in our county and blow up our budget. And clearly tonight, we could do that, and the superintendent could find money for it, and we could move forward. But I'm not going to do that. And we can certainly look at online. I have in my amendment the opportunity to expand our online-- I have in my amendment the opportunity to expand our online language curriculum. However, that's going to take time. Our students aren't going to be able to access that. And many of our students learn best with a teacher in the classroom. Because we can't expand languages at every single school, the most equitable way at this time to add languages is to add them at the academies where they're accessible to all students, yes, with transportation in many cases, but they're accessible with a teacher in the classroom for students. So again, I'm open to other ideas, but based on the presentation we've received from staff, I don't see any other options at the time for expanding our world language programs, which is something that we have put on hold for far too many years. We funded it, it didn't happen, and so now it's time to put money there and fund this vital program. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz, Ms. McLaughlin.
So I want to go back to what my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, offered earlier. And actually, if you were at thirty thousand feet, I'm going to go to forty thousand feet. I'm going to go up a little higher. We have a fully funded budget from the board supervisors. What's before us is an additional six point six million that has been identified through the state as available to us. This is above and beyond a fully funded budget. And we're honestly, this is like, you know, scrapping over the coliseum floor over what's additional. Now, I know the people are going to argue, well, this is not an embarrassment of riches, but I don't know how many years we've all sat here without fully funded budgets, and then we're looking to pare things back. We're crying over right now, an additional, well, six million, three million, it's, you know, how are we going to get more of what we want beyond a fully funded budget? And that, that's the problem I'm struggling with, is if it's down to three million, which, you know, it's, it's not, it's nine, it's nine point one, so we're actually talking about, well, we've got six point six million, and we have three point, you know, we have three million above that that we want, beyond the beyond. And this is where I struggle. Because if it were up to me, I would take all of this off, I would go back to, how could we grow project momentum? Because we've spent hundreds of millions of dollars on needs-based staffing for decades and not moved minority student achievement. And project momentum is the first thing that I have seen that has actually moved the needle. So plow more money into project momentum, and oh, by the way, let's do some more off of our safety and security review assessment from last year that had twenty, twenty million plus dollars worth of safety and security measures to increase our, our students going to school and our employees going to school, going every day into a secure school. Then, one, two, done. But we're, we're, we've delved down into, you know, the wish list of things that we would like to do. And I hate to tell you, but in the rearview mirror, there's still a lot of undone stuff on our, on our regular list. So, I mean, we can do this all night long, we could fight over, you know, an additional --
Ms. Schultz, please wrap up.
All right, an additional six point six or three above that. But, you know, directing the superintendent, I caution with, with Mr. Moon, you know, be careful what you ask for, because if you tell him to go do it, you know, we're, we're going to be surprised. And the last thing I'm going to say on that is, I have schools that are suffering under this new --
Ms. Schultz, I'm going to have to put you on a go-back.
I know, the new FRM calculations, and the staffing reserve is already down to only fifty-five, or it's already fifty-five percent gone, and they're, they're struggling with staffing, so.
Ms. Schultz, thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, and then Ms. Corbett Sanders.
So I appreciate various colleagues expressing concern that if we were to direct the superintendent to close the delta of what I mentioned before, is one tenth of one percent of a three billion dollar budget. What I want to reassure you is, the beauty is, our relationship with superintendent is called oversight and accountability. We provide the oversight, and he is accountable to this elected body on behalf of the taxpayers. So never would I, as a board member, give a blind request to the superintendent with zero oversight and zero accountability. So I will implore my colleagues again to recognize the math at the high level, one tenth of one percent. All we have to do is say to Superintendent Braybrand, and he actually already said it to us, is, okay, I think I can get you there. What he does is, we direct him to go find cost savings of one tenth of one percent. He brings back to the board. So we pass the budget with the direction of, you'll go find that you're one tenth of one percent, and you'll bring it back at however long he needs. By, I mean, it's, it's, the budget will be passed, maybe he brings it to us by the year end, maybe he brings it to us two weeks later. But he brings it to us and says, here's how I'm going to make that three million dollar delta. Understand, Dr. Braybrand has two choices. One, he makes really fabulous choices, and we applaud him. Or he and his team could go one way that other superintendents were accused of in, in many years past, of going after a Washington Monument, cutting something that's highly valued, and then the community gets upset, and the board members, some board members say we've done it before where we didn't know it was blind. But the bottom line is, this is not going to be hard. I trust Dr. Braybrand, that he is going to look at his budget, he is going to be able to make those, those value-based decisions that Ms. Corbett Sanders made. And I will respectfully disagree with some of my colleagues, that I'd rather fund the public health nurses at two hundred thousand dollars than fund more money into our awards activities. I mean, I hear what Ms. Strauss is saying, and if they're both mission critical, that's great, but you bring this up to the public and say, which one did that board fund? Awards? Added money into awards? Or to public health nurses? I think I know where the public's going to come down. But it shouldn't be us bickering around the margins. Ms. Palchuk, I'm so thankful that you kind of talked about it. The board supervisors face this too, at times. They will say, why are we dickering around, around the margins? So I still want to say to Dr. Braybrand and staff, I have confidence in your decision-making. I don't want to find myself here a week from now on Thursday, doing what Ms. Corbett Sanders did, which is, we can hand-pluck out of your budget some things that I think the public would say that was considered mission critical, and this stuff wasn't. I don't think that's how you feel, Dr. Braybrand, but Ms. Strauss, you also noted, do you want board members digging into the budget? I think it'll be embarrassing for the superintendent, I think it'll be embarrassing for the division, and I don't think it gets us to the collaboration we want to be at. So understand, we can, we can send it to him, he still has to bring back his best thinking. There's no loss of authority and control and oversight.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Next, it's Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I did want to just clear up in case anybody was wondering, because I did ask about buses and the increase in bus transportation cost. And there is, the average age of our buses are seven, seven and a half years. That's significantly down from when we did significant cuts during the recession. The only reason I mentioned this was because of the, when we talk about our values budget, we can go through and do what we have done every year when we have been in a cutting mode, and go through the line-by-line budget and say, what are our priorities? Or we can ask Dr. Braybrand to come back to us with a solution that gets us there. I only called out a couple of items, because they're fairly large ticket items in comparison to what is here on the table. And I would say that the best way of showing our IAs that we value them is to actually put it in their salaries. And it's the same thing with each one of those items up on this amendment list. They're all priorities that this board has set as important. And so from here on, I mean, we can either do the deep dive into the operating budget, or we can ask the superintendent to come back with how we can get with this, get, get through this list, and we can go through as individuals and line by lines, take a vote, who supports what, if we have to do it that way. But those are our choices. And so I would like my colleagues to, I mean, the concept of going through the operating budget is not new. We've done it every year that I've been on the board. And so if Dr. Braybrand wants to come back to us with a list that gets us there, then we can do that, too.
I'd certainly prefer to work with my staff and work with what I've heard tonight to come up, so that we can meet and meet the amendments that you all have talked about, versus having the board spend next week going through line by line. I don't think that's, I don't, that's not where I would like to go, and I hope that's not where the majority of the board would like to go. So I would like the flexibility to work with staff. Of course, I have no problem showing, showing the cards, if you will. And, you know, for anything, again, I'll bring you my best thinking, and I'll be prepared to justify it, and the board will decide whether to accept or reject it, if that's what the board, if that's what the board's pleasure is. But it feels like tonight, I, I've heard the ability to balance some of the, you know, the six million, just as a reminder, was put in the budget, right? Was put in the budget to allow this kind of conversation for the board. So I actually see it as a positive, talking about how we're continuing to advance the goals that all of you have and the passions. So we want to remember that, and this is just about now, and a very, on a good news budget with a good news category, how do we finish it up and get as much of what each of the board members are advocating for in? So I'll be glad to work with the budget chair and vice chair to accomplish that task.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Ms. Keys-Gamaro.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I appreciate that statement, and given the discussion here, I'll just provide what are important guidelines from one board member. And that is, one, transparency, which I have no doubt you would do. We know there wouldn't be this blind, hey, this is what it is, and we can't question it. I don't think that's consistent with our role as board members. And I also would like to protect the staffing reserve. I, I don't, I don't feel like that's where I would, as one board member, would like to go. I think that it may send the, the wrong message to our community and especially to our staff. I've had a number of comments come from advocates in the community and even wanting to have more flexibility and be able to handle things early, because they have a number of changes happening throughout the school year. I don't want to handicap the ability to respond to that. And so for me, that would be reducing that, unless you can assure me that it doesn't create problems. It would make me a little nervous. With respect to comments regarding project momentum, I would just caution that when project momentum has gone into these schools, they have gone into schools with Title I staffing present. And so it's very difficult to say that project momentum is the answer alone, because we have not had that situation to look at. So I would be very careful about that. I have the utmost respect for the project momentum program, but they have come alongside Title I staff and been able to accomplish what they've been able to accomplish, so I would say keep that in mind. With respect to the languages, Mr. McElveen, I didn't, I wasn't aware that there had been a funding for languages in the elementary grades, and we simply didn't follow through. I would love to hear more on that, because I think it's this, this board's job to set what we expect, and if that didn't happen, then we probably should get some explanation as to why that didn't happen. And again, I will say, I know that a number of folks at this, on this board, express concern about the earlier grades. The research does support that that is the best time to, to reach out to kids with respect to languages. And so I know that we've had a lot of talking about best practices, and so I, again, not to say that we can't do what is being proposed, although I do have some grave concern about whether kids can actually get to those academies. I think that it depends on where you live and what your income is, and it becomes an equity issue, which is of great concern to me. So I, those are my comments, Dr. Braybrand, and hopefully those guidelines will be helpful to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Palchuk, did you want to go back?
Just very briefly, support what my colleagues and Dr. Braybrand has proposed. I look forward to seeing your proposal next week. I think that's a better way for us to go at this point. And then briefly following up on Mr. McElveen and Ms. Keys-Gamaro's points, I do, I guess, if, for me, where I feel like we've gotten stuck in the elementary level, and if we're looking to understand it, I think that's important, is that we know the local immersion programs are very powerful, don't cost much, but yet, there have been barriers, whether it's the ability to have staffing to get the program started, to, you know, not just always leave it up to the principals, but to figure out where we need them and how to get them going, that I want us to look at more seriously. If funding went to LTC, and I never really liked LTC, but if funding went to LTC and is currently being used, I guess I would like to know if it was funded and it's currently being used, or if that funding was provided but is not being used, because that wasn't there. I guess that, that's what I would like to know, following the comments. If, really prior to our board, that was provided, I would like to know whether or not those funds are currently used for the elementary program. And again, I, I'm not against the high school, I just, to me, it's concerning that that's where we're starting. I appreciate your sharing your reasons why, Mr. McElveen, and I think I share your disappointment that, at this point, we haven't figured out a better way forward.
All right, thank you. Ms. Evans, did you want to go back?
Just very briefly, I did want to talk about the needs-based staffing just long enough to say, this is something that we have used for, for many, many years to lower class sizes at our, at our highest poverty schools. And there is plenty of research out there to say that this is important, particularly when you have a range of needs, when you have children living in poverty with complex issues often bringing, bringing to school, when you have language needs, when you have special needs. So certainly preserving and hopefully expanding needs-based staffing is, to my mind, absolutely critical to our schools. And I just want to add, we cannot say that lowering class size helps our children at low-poverty schools, but not children at our high-poverty schools. They do help our children at high-poverty schools tremendously. And so I, to my mind, that's one of the most important things we can be preserving as a board.
Thank you. Mr. Moon, did you want another go-back?
Yes, please. On the requesting or directing the superintendent to come back with a plan to be able to meet the, whatever the gap there may be with our amendments, I mean, that, that's a good idea. But what I was saying earlier was this, we, we take an action on the final budget in the second meeting in May, and then we make a decision. And that has to have all the components, basically. We're making a decision. So if that decision includes basically placeholder for cuts that to be identified to superintendent, to be identified by superintendent, what I meant to say was, we need to honor what he comes back with. Unless we, our direction is, that's a subject to school board's, school board's approval later on, that means accountability will be shifted back to the school board. And when superintendent's makes proposal, presents a proposal budget, that's his priorities. That's where he sees priority in his proposed budget. And we take some action in February in response, in reaction to that. That's what he have. I mean, I would have a difficult time to see unless things have changed, you know, drastically, him to come back with a different sets of priority three months later on. So, but since, you know, there may be a small gap, you know, we can direct him, we can give him, you know, you find somewhere, and let us know. give him, you know, you find somewhere, and let us know where you are coming back with, or we can give a little narrower scope of where you should be looking at, and then come back with his proposal, and then we can, we can, I don't mind having that further discussion, but what I'm saying is, we need to give him, if you want to do that, we need to give him the latitude to come back with, and then without really trying to second guess where he came up with the money. That's what I meant to say, based upon my experience, because we had done that many times before when we had tough budget situations. I wanted to ask our budget staff, finance staff, a question or two regarding our lapse. I tried to find some information regarding laps for FY '20, it seems to be that's a $2.8 million, and FY '19, it was exactly the same amount, $2.8 million. I have not been able to find from the budget book, I mean, I haven't had enough time to go back and take a look, for 1817, I mean, prior to FY '19, somehow I have not been able to find that. Usually, my understanding of a lapse, trend of lapse is this, when economies is good, lapse is higher, because, you know, we have to compete with the private sectors in hiring employees. So I think we can generally agree that our national economy, even the local economy, has been improving, that has to have some-
And Mr. Moon, you're, please wrap up.
I cannot, I cannot.
I know you can't, that's what I'm telling you.
I cannot, I cannot, I mean, I have to assume that that has have some impact upon lapse. If you just freeze the lapse at $2.8 million, there's where you may find some room to realize a little additional revenue, but that's just a suggestion for you to take a look, because I don't have historical trend data on the lapse.
Mr., Dr. Braybrand?
I would just, I would reiterate to the board, I've heard you tonight. Give me time, we have a whole week.
We've got a week, exactly, you guys, it's a whole week.
And let us put our best thinking, our collective best thinking together, work with the Budget Chair and Vice Chair, and see if we can't close this off with a flourish next Thursday evening, with the transparency that board members want, the accountability that board members want, but also moving forward, understanding some of the things that have been worked on, on your end, to kind of trim, and see where we can trim on our side as well. So I'm confident that I can work with the Budget Chair and Vice Chair and come up with something that we can have a win-win next week.
I'd love to end on that note right there, but I have some colleagues who still have some go-backs, so Mr. Wilson, you're one of them.
Well, thank you. That's, I love the sound of that, Dr. Braybrand. Now, just to make sure I understand the flourish, is the flourish going to result in 9.1 million of being available for all of the projects that we have? Is that what we're talking, is that what you're suggesting, that you may be able to cover the entire delta?
Well, you know, I, yeah, we're over three. Some of the work of the board got it down to being over 1.2. I'd like to leave just a little space at the, you know, when you pour a cup of coffee, a little space at the end for cream and sugar, and work with the Budget Chair and Vice Chair to see, different folks were offering, and I heard the offer, and then wait, no, I won't. So we can do it all here at the table, or I can work with my staff and then try to work with the Budget Chair and Vice Chair, and try to get at the multiple issues that board members have raised as part of wanting to support this budget around passions that clearly align with the strategic plan, but also do it in a fiscally responsible way. So I don't want, I don't want to go to the full 3.3. I'm not ready to say it's at the bottom of the 7.3, though I do appreciate the board, that kind of, that kind of back and forth is the kind of team that I think we've got to work to create. And I'll work to try to find with the direction of the Budget Chair and Vice Chair what I think can be a winning hand for next week.
Okay, and I didn't mean to, you know, sort of require you to do the mental math in your head exactly where that money would come from, but it is, I think, important for all of us to sort of understand sort of what's your target number. Because the conversation, actually, we were, we were having a conversation which was, seemed to be moving towards compromise on a number of different proposals to get to, get to six. And, and so, and I was, I was listening with interest to that conversation and seeing the alternatives, and I actually think that conversation is an expectation that the county residents have for us to, to, you know, have the ideas and the merits of ideas bounce off each other. And, and so, you know, that's why I'm curious to know sort of, well, are we going to, is that conversation going to be mooted by the fact that maybe, maybe there is a little more we can squeeze out of the orange to get, to get the money to fund sort of everyone's proposal? So that's the reason why I was pressing on that point. I did have a question. One of the items that's listed is the restraint and seclusion placeholder. There's nothing in the description that we have that describes sort of what the thinking is on that, and will that be part of what you can give to us by next week?
Yeah, I believe we-
Maybe I didn't see it.
I believe we had that at the budget work session, and that was where we did that presentation. It was, was it three additional bits, Ms. Johnson, and then training?
That's correct.
Okay, so can you describe it again? I guess I-
Yeah, so three additional bits. Ms. Keys-Gamarra had an amendment for five, and in the work session, we talked about adding three more so that we really can distribute that through almost each pyramid. And then we just talked tonight about one-time money for the training that I could then build in in the next budget as a recurring expense.
Okay, so, and I do remember that, and so the-
Right.
So the main change is actually to the-
To the training, to count the training one time and then build it into the budget next year, is-
And then increase the five to eight.
Five bits to eight.
Okay. And that's the, but that is the entirety of the restraint and seclusion placeholder concept at this point?
At this point, yes, sir. We have a task force starting in June, and, you know, as always, I will be accountable and transparent. If the task force has recommendations, we have our review process, our quarterly review process into next year's budget, and if we need to talk about things that come from that task force that need to be actionable next year, then I will bring that to you with all deliberate speed. As far as tonight's discussion, I don't want the board to feel, or I feel, look, 7.3 is easier, like, go do your homework, 7.3 is an easier lift, but I'd like to still leave a little bit of room working with the Chair and Vice Chair to see, there may be some discussions with, that the Chair and Vice Chair can have that make adjustments from what's even been said tonight, and not have anyone feel they're locked into stone with their comments tonight. That's what I'd like, and then to see what work we can do to try to meet in the middle. There may be a little bit more room of the give and take that can take place, working with the Chair and Vice Chair of the budget, to get us to a place no higher than the 9 million, maybe a little, maybe a little higher than the seven. I mean, I don't want to commit tonight and lock any board member in on a particular number. And there may be more members who haven't put something out that might be willing when they see something revised with what it would look like on our end to match it, and say, hey, I can live with that.
Okay, with that in mind, then I'm going to follow up to Mr. Plattenberg, because one of the proposals, Ms. Pachek's proposal, that she had, was one of the folks that had offered some compromise, and I just would like to make sure I understand, because there were, the positions that weren't included seemed to be important facilities-related positions, so I'd just like to get your impact, your input on that, Mr. Plattenberg.
Thank you very much for the question. Yep, in fact, in those conversations with budget, the last time, I complimented both Mr. Smith and Ms. Burden for coming up with a systemic approach to addressing the trades' positions. And their commitment, as I recall during the work session, was to go ahead and include that with subsequent budgets in a formulaic approach. I think both in the short term and the long term, that's probably the best approach for us, because keep in mind, when the original study came out in 2012, the 2013 report on the audit that was done, it identified over 240 positions that we were short.
Yes.
And when we spoke of that, we talked about, that day in that work session, about one of our high schools having a major malfunction with water pressure into the building the night of a play, to where it came down to the wire of my response team, my plumbers, which I don't have many of, to try and identify the solution, remediate the problem, repair it, and get things back to normal, so that instructional program, the drama program, so that the play could go on. And in fact, it did. So I really commend them for that approach. I think it will get us moving the needle first and foremost, and I think, you know, it's in the spirit of this whole compromise, I think it's consistent with that language.
So just to make sure I understand, so the, the eight trade position, was that part of this systemic proposal that you have, because, you know, there's HVAC technicians that are listed on there, that if you, you know, I mean, just the story you just told, those positions sound like they may be crucial to support instructional programming. And given the age of some of our facilities, I am reluctant to just, you know, sort of, despite Ms. Pachek's spirit of compromise, to, to give up those positions if they are crucial to the, to our facilities.
I do understand, Mr. Wilson, and, you know, I've been saying, year in and year out, we've spoken of this through the Infrastructure Finance Committee, the age of our facilities, you're spot on. The challenge is trying to find that balance. Do I believe we need them? Absolutely. But do I also see these competing needs in this board discussion as a body? And I think, I think the spirit that was, the idea that was thought of, as long as we address a systemic issue, then I feel we're moving in the right direction. But certainly, I mean, this was, what, 2012? We're talking now we're in 2019, 20, so.
Okay, and then, and then just lastly, I do appreciate-
You're out of time, sir.
Yeah, I'm not going to do another go-back, I promise. And I did skip my first one. But Ms. Karen Corbett-Sanders, I did appreciate you, you kind of pulling things out that maybe could kind of set the wider priorities as a board. I think that is helpful, but is sort of present some challenges here as we close out this session.
All right, so we have one last set of go-backs, I don't think everybody wants to go back, but I'd like to speak this, this, at the end of round three here. I would like to take the pulse of the board to see if what the superintendent is proposing to come back with a plan, working with Janie and myself. And, Dr. Braybrand, when do you think we could do that so the board would have some time to digest it before Thursday night's meeting? Tuesday, okay. Tuesday works, that gives us a day and a half to, depending on when we get it on Tuesday.
If we can get it earlier, we'll, we'll get it for you earlier.
All right, we'll, we'll expect something by the close of business on Tuesday, if not sooner, that will be great. I do want to thank my colleagues. I think this process, while it's not perfect, it is, you know, we've had amazing thoughtful comments, people are coming from different perspectives, people are bringing their passions to the table, and a lot of this is because we have not had this opportunity before. We are, I feel that we have had lots of opportunities, we've scheduled lots of opportunities for dialogue, and where, you know, Ms. Schultz said, we are at a fully funded budget, it is a good news budget, and we are going beyond, beyond with some of these. I think, you know, because the majority of us on this board have not been here where we can restore or rebuild things, that's why we're coming at this. I so appreciate my colleagues who have done already, and I know, again, I think, Dr. Braybrand, I appreciate that, the words aren't set in stone, but you have said, those of you who have said, this is something we could consider cutting or trimming, even though it is very, very important. So I ask my colleagues to also think about that, and, you know, because one week, whatever we, where we end up on Tuesday, we may be coming and saying, can you compromise on this? There, there, there may be that option there. So I want my colleagues to go into this with that spirit of this. Yes, Tuesday, Ms. Keys-Gamarra? You keep saying Tuesday, Tuesday. Tuesday, he said he's coming back to us with some-
We're not meeting Tuesday.
We're not having a meeting on Tuesday, no. No, no, no.
We are not meeting on Tuesday.
Tuesday, we were having, we will, we, Tuesday, we will have phone calls, Ms. Strauss and I will be getting back to you about, and so, you know, you need to take the time to look at that. So with that, I hope we can wrap up our comments and wrap up shortly, and I will just go through my list, and if you want a go-back, just say yes. If not, so again, we'll start with Ms. Hines, any go-backs there at this point? Mr. McElveen?
Yes, real quickly, so to save you trouble, I am going to cut .4 million off of my amendment. I am going to eliminate the, the trades positions for academies, which is .5 million, and add 1.1 million into online campus to add four levels of languages there. So that brings us down .4 million, in the spirit of compromise with Ms. Hines, Ms. Pachek and others, and reflecting the disappointment in this process and the fact that in January we didn't have an opportunity to act on these amendments. Thank you.
So, wait, Mr. McElveen, so-
It's 1.2 million.
I'm sorry, 1.2 million?
Yes, instead of 1.6.
Yeah, Mr. McElveen, would you give me a chance to have a conversation with you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Burden, and Ms. Wiggington, and Ms. You, you got that?
Yes, we have it.
I see you huddling over there. All right, Ms. Schultz, you said you didn't want to go back, and Ms. McGlocklin, you do.
I do. I just want to refresh everybody's memory about why, unfortunately, we seem to find ourselves doing this every single year, at least in the eight years I've been on the board. And here's what maybe you all might remember. The superintendent, and we've gone through at least three, if not four, because I think Mr. Lockard was with us for one of those years, too, but what we've been asked to do is the superintendent brings a proposed budget in January, we're asked to please not tinker, play around, pull it apart, but just accept it with loving arms and send it over to the Board of Supervisors so that we can send a strong message of support for our school's budgetary needs. And that then we'll spend the next several months to get to next week. Well, that's what's happened here. There was no dissecting it in February, it was left pristine, untouched, not a penny changed. We've had some fantastic, meaningful conversations. Mr. McElveen, you're right, Ms. Hines, I remember you brought Get to Green for us, and we've discussed these along the way, and some others that have cropped up along with, as well, and they've needed to. But now here we are, at the deadline, and we've got a week to go, and the message to this board was, well, it's a little late now to go tinker with the superintendent's $3 billion budget, and we're all squabbling over $6 million. And so this isn't where we should find ourselves, it's not a reflection on our Chair and Vice Chair of the budget, this has been an eight-year culture that I have watched happen. So I'm hoping that we can all definitely benefit from this learning experience, because I think this has actually been one of the better, more collaborative dialogues we've ever had with each other about our budget priorities. But I also just want to remind the superintendent and staff as well, understand, we can't be given two separate messages. One is, leave that proposed budget alone when we vote in early February, and then when is the work going to get done to dissect it out? Because I know you bring your operational expertise, and I would actually welcome your voice, your operational expertise, to say, any one of these things or all of these things, some are mission critical, some of them, no, you still believe every single thing in your $3 billion budget has to stay, and that's not as mission critical. The risk is, you'll have something like Ms. Corbett-Sanders or any one of the rest of us plucking out something like she did tonight on awards, you know, $200,000 in awards being added to next year's budget, and I don't think there's a taxpayer in this county who would say that was mission critical over $200,000 for one of these other things. So I want to get us to a win-win as well. I was trying to think about a way that staff isn't going to be working around the clock to have to now cobble together the delta, but we've been kind of told, don't go dig in yourselves, I don't know what else the other choice is, but maybe what we need to learn from this, Dr. Braybrand, is, we don't have this kind of conversation the week before, we end up having this conversation maybe a month before, which is, you know, we're going to dig into your budget, and we're going to ask you, can you defend $3 billion line items in there?
Ms. McGlocklin, time's up.
Oh, thank you. Oh, then I do have my one question. It's come to my attention tonight that, that your budget cuts three speech-language pathologists for next year's budget, and that- for next year's budget, and that, that is where we get $2 million a year annually in Medicaid. Cutting those speech-language pathologists, as I understand it, the cases weren't reported, the caseloads haven't been reported properly. It would mean somebody having 65 kids on their caseload. So I am gonna be asking that we get some information from staff as soon as possible on why was that cut proposed? And by the way, folks, I want you to know, the way it came back to me was, why did the school board cut those three positions? Yet again, we're getting blamed for something that we haven't even voted on, and we certainly didn't propose.
We'll be glad to look into that. I, I'm not, I wanna look into that, and I'll follow up with the board appropriately.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment here because, about process. And I, I hear some of my good friends on the Board are not happy with the process, but I do want the public to know, because I feel like there's a perception right now that's coming out of this conversation, that there was no Board input prior to the proposed budget. But that's what the, I, I just want to say, that's what I'm hearing, and that's what certain members of the public may be hearing. Starting last September, we started one-on-one budgets. What do you want the proposed budget to look like? What do you want, Dr. Braybrand? What should we fund? We have lists, I have binders. So I, I don't know, and we've tried our best thinking as to how not to get here at this point, but we always seem to get here after eight years. So we are, we are doing the best. I do feel like we have lots and lots of opportunities for open dialogue with the Board, with Dr. Braybrand and his team from September on, and we each, we started it much earlier this year than we did before. So I, I realize it's still not perfect, and some people see it through different lenses or a different way. So I, I just wanted to comment on that. And then I do have Ms. Hines, you want to go back? And then after that, if you want to go back, you would, it would be Ms. Corbett-Sanders next.
Okay. Yeah, also, I mean, you know, in the spirit of continuous improvement, we should always try to get better. But a couple things, you know, I, I think actually, a large, complex budget, this is our collective responsibility, there are 13 of us at this table, it's going to be tough, and it's going to come down to the wire. You know, that's just the way it's going to be. And the question of, you know, why we sort of leave the February budget on, sort of intact at that time? I've never heard the Superintendent ask me to not challenge that budget. I think what I've come to understand from the Board, no, I never have. I have never had, I, but Ms. McLaughlin, what you, okay, but here's what I've come to understand from, okay, I understand, if you, if you didn't say the Superintendent asked us, then good, that's a good clarification, because I haven't heard that. You're right, I think collectively, and I've come to agree with this, but there's a better way to do it, somebody come up with it, but I think when I first got on the Board, we tried to tinker with the budget in the wintertime. And what happened was, you know, I realized, well, we're messing with a budget before we know what our revenue is. So we're making, you know, values decisions without knowing the size of the pie, and it just, to me, doesn't make sense to do it at that point. So I, myself, just got to the point where I realized, well, it just, it doesn't make sense, but let's see what our revenues are before we start, you know, making tough decisions about what we want to do with that revenue. So that's why I think, you know, if we can find a better way to do it, but I think we end up in May, you know, doing the best, and I think this has been a very good conversation. It's okay that there's some conflict. It's gonna happen. It's part of our job. So, and I want to thank Dr. Braybrand for always being positive and being willing to try to get us to a, a yes next week, because this is a good news budget, and I think we can do that.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett-Sanders, and then Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
I too want to echo your comments, Ms. Hines, on, this is a good news budget. And having worked on budgets, not only with this Board, but with large-scale organizations, the budgeting process is always messy, no matter where you're at and what organization you're at. You set your priorities, and then once you actually get a better realization of how much funding you have, because that's your revenues, then you can make informed decisions. And so I think that that's part of the process. We were trying to restrict ourselves to a very narrow funding area, and I think what we realized tonight, collectively, as well as with the leadership team, is that there needs to be a bit more give and take on those priorities that this Board has, once we have our funding more set. And so this was the beginning of the conversation, and now we've asked the Superintendent to come back with a sharpened pencil on those areas where may not, they may not be as strategically important to this Board, and that's what he's heard from us tonight. And so I think, you know, I look forward to seeing the Tuesday product, and I'm optimistic that we will end on the high note that we started this process with.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
I, I appreciate the conversation tonight. It's, it's probably one of the times, most recent times on my phone is, I don't know what the problem is, that we've had an opportunity to really say what our priorities are. So I do appreciate that. And I, I really just would like to, Madam Chair, ask the Board, you know, are we comfortable with having our Superintendent look at, you know, according to what funds might be available if they take another look at the budget? And then, so I'm sort of calling the question.
Well, if you, if you'd like to raise our hands, we can do that. Let's do that at the end, after everybody has one more final chance for go-back. Okay? I mean, I'm not certain where-
That would be the, the antithesis of calling the question, but you certainly have that.
Well, we're, we're really not in a formal setting where you call the question, but if you want me to take that vote now, I will-
Well, I, I thought people had spoken.
Um, no, you're kind of in the middle. I still have a couple people that I think want to do that. So, you know.
That's up to you.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna- I appreciate that, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. We will, we will, I will make certain that everybody is comfortable with that, with a show of hands, and if we're not, I think I'd like to hear, we're probably, let's just see the show of hands in, after that, and then we'll go. So Ms. Palczek, you didn't want one, Ms. Strauss, you didn't want it, oh, you do, Ms. Strauss wants a go-back.
I want to thank my colleagues for sharing their ideas and opinions tonight. This is very helpful, because we obviously, next week, do need to come to a resolution. So I very much appreciate everyone's sharing and their honesty, because that helps. And I, this is my last budget, actually. I've done 26. This is the most collaborative budget that I have worked on with the Superintendent. Beginning last fall, Dr. Braybrand did meet with us many times individually, asking what our priorities were. I've never had that experience before, and there was truly an effort many times to find out, what do you want? What are your big goals? What are your ideas? What do you think are really important? There was a tremendous effort, sort of the bucket list, what did we want to have funded? And I really appreciated that. And so that I think that when the Superintendent proposed the budget, not on, on a line item, we certainly were not expecting, I think, to see, you know, line item by line item, but the larger areas, to make sure that our big goals were there. And I think that they were, by and large. So I really appreciated that. So that I think by the time we got to this point, by and large, the large goals were being met, and certainly there were more things on the table tonight, and, and certainly we will try one more time to include as many of everybody's ideas as possible. And I appreciate, Dr. Braybrand, once again, you're gonna try to see if you can help us, and we're gonna try to help each other, to cover the ground as best we can, because this is a good news budget. And I, again, I really appreciate your work with the County Executive, because that's in large part what has made this successful. Because we were able to get the, the funding that we needed in the first place, so that relationship, that personal relationship, it really paid off. So again, I thank my colleagues, and I've been keeping notes, I know Ms. Burden has kept notes. So I'm pretty confident that by next Thursday, hopefully, everybody can take a deep breath and feel that we've had a pretty good meeting of the minds as best we can, and that everybody feels that by and large, maybe not 100% of everything has come to pass, but maybe 95 or 96%, which would be really very good. That's an A+. So thank you all very much.
Ms. Evans, would you like a final go-back? No? Mr. Moon? Would you like another go-back?
I will just be happy to go to a close meeting.
All right, and Mr. Wilson? You're done. All right. Thank you all. So I would like to see a show of hands if you would allow the Superintendent to work with Ms. Strauss and I to come back with a plan on Tuesday by the close of business or earlier, to talk about how we can close this delta a little bit. And I ask that everybody please be willing to talk and compromise. So are, I'd like to see a show of hands if everyone in favor of that. All right, so that's unanimous. All right, all right. Thank you. So we will, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, we'll make a motion to go into close.
The Board will now make a motion to go into close meeting to discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the performance to motion, discipline and salaries of specific public officers and specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A1, and medical records pursuant to Section 2 dot, oh, scrap that. So it's just Section 2.2, 3711A1. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Palczek, seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? And that is unanimous, with Ms. Hines away from the table.
One, two, three, four, five, we, we may not have six, seven, we're at seven. We have seven.